You know I've traveled near and far to see the shining sea. I've seen a lot of places and people that are nice to me. One place that's in my heart and this is how I feel. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. She's nestled in the sand hills on a river called Cape Fear. Special to so many who proudly served our country here. She was named for Lafayette and known for cotton mills. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. Babe Ruth hit his first one. Heard around the world. Sherman marched for the Union and burned the arsenal. Old Market House still standing, but stands for freedom's will. I'm talking about my hometown Fayetteville. My hometown Fayetteville. I'm so proud to be from here. It don't take long when you're away from home to find out how you feel. It's always good to come home to Fayetteville. My all-American city Fayetteville.
Good evening and welcome to the October 23rd, 2017. Regular Fayetteville City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this point and ask Pastor Joshua Goodman to come forward, please, and lead us with the invocation. If everybody would please stand and remain standing to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance done by Cub Scout PAC 771. Pastor.
It's all bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you now in the name of Jesus. And Father, we thank you that you are God and you are a good God, that you are a great and awesome God. And Father, right now, I personally thank you for this hometown of Fayetteville, God, that you have given us wise and good leadership. I thank you for our mayor, our mayor pro temp, our city council, Father, for their wisdom, their strength. And Father, I just pray in the name of Jesus that, Father, you would continue to endow them with that wisdom, with that leadership. Our city manager, Father, each one who is in a position, a station of authority, Father, whether it be our police chief or our fire marshals, Lord, Father, that you would give each one of them your wisdom, your grace, your mercy, God, to fulfill the vision, to fulfill your purpose in their life. Father, we ask that you would come, that you would head up this meeting, that, Father, you would oversee, that, Lord, you would cause your presence to be known, seen, heard, and felt in this place this evening. Father, we say, let your kingdom come, God, let your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Father, we give you all praise, all glory this evening in Jesus' name. Amen.
At this time, I would like to ask PAC troop or Cub, I guess they're PACs, right? Cub PAC 771 to come forward and lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Cub scout) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very nice. Thank you very much. Would one of you like to speak and tell us where you're from?
Act 771 is sponsored by the Presbyterian Church here in Fayetteville.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the leaders for doing what you do. Pastor Goodman, I'd like to come back to you. Tell us something about your church and your mission.
Well, I'm the senior pastor of Clifton Christian Center. We have a church, a school, daycare, pre-K4 program. Proud to say that we have, on several occasions, two or three occasions, sent the Cumberland County Spelling Bee winner up to Washington, DC. This past year, we sent one of our students to do the National Bible Bee. Came home with the first-place winner. Twenty-five thousand dollars was awarded to the young man. And yes, sir, that's what I'm, didn't know there was that much involved in the Bible Bee. I should have done it when I was a kid. But just good stuff. Everything from, like I said, our school to our daycare, feeding the homeless in our area, clothing them, and it's an honor. I want to say to you, our city council, our mayor, it's an honor to be able to serve in this city alongside you, with the church, the government, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for all that you do, your service. Me, as a longtime resident of Fayetteville, I see the difference that you guys are making, and I see the difference that good leadership is making. As one of the spiritual leaders in this town, I appreciate you guys. Thank you so much.
Pastor Josh, your church, your membership is very active with many, many organizations, and you help out, and you allow others to use your church and the grounds for different events. So thank you on behalf of the community. But, sir, yesterday, you celebrated something personally. Would you like to share that? Just brag a little bit?
Yeah, a little bit, for just a moment. Ladies and gentlemen, I am now a grandfather, and so you can give me a little round, that's okay. That's all right. My granddaughter, Macy Elise, was dedicated to the Lord yesterday at our church service, had a very special, very good time. Thank you, Mayor, for joining us out there. It was an honor to have you there for, again, and I think it's indicative of our community, where we're able to come together, those who are civil authorities, spiritual authorities, and join together in celebration of life. And so it was a great, great, wonderful day. So thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am very excited to welcome Jerry Newton, our new Development Services Director, to the city of Fayetteville. Jerry has over thirty years' experience, about fifteen years in the public sector, fifteen years in private sector. He was formerly the Development and Planning Director for Licking, Ohio, spelled L-I-C-K-I-N-G. I'm pronouncing it Licking, some people pronounce it Licking. I would like to also give Jerry just an opportunity to also say welcome. Jerry?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, thank you for the opportunity to come and serve you. As a steward leader, I look forward to the opportunities that will be afforded to me as I can join with you and all those on the staff in doing good for this community. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the city of Fayetteville. At this time, I'd go to Mayor Pro Tem Mitch Colvin, and then we'll go to council member Kathy Jensen following.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation will be presented by Mayor Robertson for Customer Service Week. Presented to Tiffany Bryson, is she here?
Oh, there she is. Great.
All right, Ms. Bryson and team. All right. Proclamation reads as follows. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas everyday residents of Fayetteville and the people throughout the city directly benefit from the dedication and the commitment of the city of Fayetteville employees, those public servants, and unsung heroes that kept Fayetteville running. And whereas, the city of Fayetteville employees represent numerous occupations and trades, possess a broad array of skills and expertise, and put these to use with efficiency and integrity for anyone in our city. And whereas, many city of Fayetteville employees, including our police officers, firefighters, risk their safety and in some cases their lives in service to people, to the people of Fayetteville. And whereas, we all owe a substantial debt of gratitude to the city of Fayetteville employees, signed and attested by Nat Robertson, mayor of the city of Fayetteville, proclaim October the 2nd until October the 6th, 2017, to be our Customer Service Week. And I encourage all directors, managers, and residents to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of the city of Fayetteville employees and the extent to which they all rely upon and benefit from their service. Give them a round of applause at this time.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. It has been a goal of the city councils to make sure that we are a little more user-friendly here at City Hall, and certainly, these folks have done everything humanly possible to make sure that our citizens, our residents are well-served. Tiffany, I want to just pass the mic if you want to say something about your departments and what you do and how it affects our residents and how they can be involved.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tiffany Bryson. I'm with the One Fayette Hall Center, but today, I'm representing the customer amazement team. And beside me are some of the members of the team, not all of them could be here today, but we're a committee that is staff-driven. We're trying to promote positive customer service within our organization. We know that customer service, it means a lot. It promotes, you know, good living inside of our city. I apologize. So everything that you do on a daily basis, whether you're a staff member, an elected official, community leader, you know, what you do matters. Your commitment and your efforts do not go unnoticed.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I put Tiffany on the spot in asking her that, but it is important because she, if you place a call to the city of Fayetteville, or if you use our Fayette Fix-It app, Tiffany's the one that responds. So she is the, she's the lead. What's your title, Tiffany?
I'm the CSR supervisor, but we have a team of people that respond to this.
Okay. So she is, she's the one in charge of making sure that our residents are serviced well, be it missed pickup from trash, or speeders in the neighborhood, or debris on the side of the road. Tiffany and her team takes those calls and then distributes it to the department that handles it. So she is, she's really the front line to customer service, and we appreciate you doing what you do.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yes, if Ms. Gladys Hill and team could come down to the podium, please? Okay, all right. Whereas during October, we raise awareness and encourage people to take steps to reduce the risk of breast cancer. And we encourage all women to talk to their health care providers about mammograms and other methods of early detection and what can be done to reduce the risk. And whereas, more than 250,000 American women and 2,000 men will likely be diagnosed with some form of breast cancer in 2017. Because of early detection and improved treatment options, deaths from breast cancer have decreased significantly in the last decade, but there is still work to be done. And whereas, to encourage everyone to take steps in detecting breast cancer early and to express solidarity with those who have been affected by the disease, the city of Fayetteville Market House will be lit on Thursday, October 26, 2017, at 5:30 PM. And whereas, the event is coordinated by the Cape Fear Valley Health Foundation, Friends of Cancer Center. Now therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Fayetteville, on behalf of Fayetteville City Council and all the citizens hereof, I do hereby proclaim October 26, 2017, as Light Up Fayetteville in Pink Day.
Thank you. Councilmember Jensen. And at this time, I'll introduce Taylor, who is with the Cape Fear Valley Foundation.
Hi, everyone. I am Tyler Sutherland, Cape Fear Valley Health Foundation, Friends of the Cancer Center representative. And I just want to thank you to every single person that is here today, listening to these words that have been said. And a huge thank you to Gladys Hill, who has coordinated an outstanding effort in lighting up Fayetteville in pink. She has been selling light bulbs throughout the month, so we are very excited. If you can all come out, please, this Thursday, the 26th, at 5:30 PM, we will be outside of the Market House, and we will proclaim Light Up Fayetteville in Pink. And for Friends of the Cancer Center, all of those funds that are raised will come directly and stay with those patients who are being treated right here at home. So it's an outstanding impact that you are leaving and will continue to leave in the years to come. So thank you all.
Thank you, Tyler. Ms. Gladys said that she is forty-eight light bulbs short of a thousand. So I count about forty-eight people in this room that need pink light bulbs. Ms. Gladys, thank you so much. And you can pick them up at Mid-South Lighting, so stop by and grab your light bulbs. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Council, item 5.0 is approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, before we go there, I'm sorry. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce Stephen Ferran. He is our representative tonight from the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. Stephen is a junior at Pine Forest, and I'm going to turn it over to him, but before I turn it over to him, I would like, can you stand up, Harmony? And this is Harmony, and she is from Jack Britt, and she is here with Stephen. This is our youth council. We are in our fourth year. I do want to say one little thing. This weekend, I got a picture texted to me, and there was a child from state that went to West Georgia for a conference, a leadership conference, and when he was there, he met another friend from the Fayetteville Youth Council that was representing East Carolina. So East Carolina and NC State were in Georgia representing their schools, and both children were from Fayetteville. So we are doing a lot of good work teaching children how to do leadership. So I will say that and take it over to Stephen.
Would you just like me to talk about what's going on in FCYC?
Yes. Tell us a little bit about yourself and what's going on with FCYC.
Okay. I am a junior at Pine Forest High School. I started the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council one year ago. Some things that we're doing in the community are kindness matters, which was a huge success last year, which is where we just, it's pretty self-explanatory. We just go around and spread kindness through, last year, we did it throughout the schools in our community, but this year, we're looking to do it, like, expand it further and reach it, like, let it reach other parts of the community. We're doing a veterans brunch at our FCYC office, which will consist of our, the members, parents that have served in the military. And then, we're also planning on doing an MLK Service Day, which we have not come up with a project that we're planning on doing, but we will do something in the community, whether it's cleanup trash along the roads, or there's just many things that we could do. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your involvement. Yours, too. Thanks, Harmony. Councilmember Art.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any baseball fans in the room tonight? All right. So the Fall Classic kicks off tomorrow night. If you're not familiar with that, that's the World Series, and it's kind of exciting for the city of Fayetteville because our partners with the minor league team here, the Houston Astros, are in the World Series this year. So it ought to be an exciting matchup against the Dodgers, and, you know, now that we've kind of got a relationship there, I hope everybody in Fayetteville will cheer for the Astros. In the future, some of the young players that'll come through here may be on those rosters playing for the Astros. So that'd be kind of exciting. You'll be able to watch some of their youngsters develop here and then move up and play in a great American tradition, Astros World Series. So the first game is tomorrow night, the 24th, starts at 8:09 PM, and that'll be the Astros and the Dodgers, and then they'll play on Wednesday, same time, and then on Friday and Saturday. Hopefully, the Astros will win the best of seven in four games, and we'll be celebrating this weekend that our partners, the Astros, are World Series champions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Art. All right. Item 5.0 is the approval of the agenda.
So be it, Mr. Mayor.
So be it means a motion to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Moan. Any discussion? Seeing none, council, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. 6.0 is the consent. Councilmember Art.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it's the will of the council, I would recommend that we pull items 6.02 and item 6.04 and approve the rest of the agenda as presented.
Is there a second of the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Devier. Any discussion? Mr. Moan.
Mr. Mayor, we have a large contingent in the audience that is interested on the consent agenda, specifically item 6.016, which is a hurricane relief waiver of fees in Festival Park. I'd just like to make sure they understand that when this vote is taken, if it's in the affirmative, the waiver of fees is being approved during the consent agenda, just so you're not waiting for, hey, when's it coming? When's it coming? It's on our consent agenda.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Moan. This is the vote to waive the fees in Festival Park for this group. Seeing no further discussion, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Art.
Item 6.02, if it pleases the council, I would move that we direct staff to schedule a public hearing for this zoning item in November.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Devier. I'm sorry, council, I didn't have my lights on. Is there any discussion? That's just 6.02. Okay. Seeing no further discussion, council, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. 6.04, Mr. Moan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, like 6.02, I'd like to set this item, this rezoning case, for a public hearing in November to allow the citizens of West Point neighborhood to come and speak, as the connector routes being discussed could potentially add another 156 vehicles or homes, which is more vehicles into an exit route on Locksey Drive that already services about 200 homes. So I think it's important the West Point neighborhood gets to come have an opportunity to speak next month.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Devier. Further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I can, have somebody from staff step up. Reference the public hearing.
Mr. Harmon, is that you?
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Congratulations. So the question I have is, we put signs out to show that there's a zoning issue, and then we'll notify people within 500 feet of the affected properties that there'll be a public hearing set?
Yes, sir.
Is there a way on the signage that we can put that a public hearing has been set and the date?
I can check into that. It's typically not, we don't put what the date of the public hearing is, just the hearing number and where to call for information, but I can check with the city's sign people to see if that's a possibility to put a little something on there for that.
If we could, I just, I had two citizens inquire about that very question today, and I just want to make sure. They might not be within the 500-foot envelope, but they have an interest in the properties, and I just want to make sure people are well-informed of the public hearing and the dates. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. All right. Seeing no further discussion, we'll vote on 6.04 to bring it up to a public hearing. That's the Moan-Devier motion. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. And before we move to item 7.0, which is reports from our boards and commissions, if any of you would like to exit at this time, we'll if any of you would like to exit at this time, we'll give you just a minute to do that. Thank you for attending. commissions, and ask Dr. Jackson to come forward, who is the, uh, chair or co-chair of the audit committees, um, um, the audit committee. Welcome, Dr. Jackson.
Welcome, thank you. In accordance with the guidelines set forth in the City of Fayetteville's Audit Committee Charter, the Audit Committee met four times, at least once quarterly, over the past fiscal year. The Committee assisted since City Council by reviewing financial information and management reports and providing independent recommendations regarding the scope, priority, and methods of audit-related activities. Specifically, the Audit Committee accomplished the following task over the past year. We adopted the bylaws on October 20th, 2016, establishing the Fourth Thursday of each quarter as the regular meeting date. We received and reviewed the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016, from Cherry Becker, Becker, LLP. We were met, we recommended to City Council the selection of the Independent Auditors RSM US LLP of New Bern, covering the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017. We received and reviewed the fiscal year 2016-17 internal audit annual work plan and monitored progress in addressing risk priorities for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017. We reviewed the internal audit reports as they were issued and were briefed on all completed audit assignments by internal audit employees and department representatives when needed. And finally, we reviewed the progress of quarterly follow-up reports and discussed the action plan related to outstanding audit issues. The Audit Committee members wish to express our appreciation to the city staff that support our efforts and keep us informed of events and issues, and look forward to continuing to serve the interests of the City of Fayetteville in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Thank you for your time. Counsel, uh, do we have any questions to Dr. Jackson? Uh, Mr. McDougal, then Mr. Crisp.
Thank you for your work. Uh, we really appreciate it. Well, what happens when they have findings? Uh, are we later briefed on that, or are the findings like citywide travel and training? There was a, a finding.
Yes, we...
And there was one on the procurement cards and a couple of other areas, and, um, even theft of time.
Yes, we are briefed, and Elizabeth is here to address...
Exactly. There is a, good evening, there is an implementation date that's required on all of our audit reports for our management responses. So when we issue a finding, we have a management response, along with the responsible party and an implementation date. We do do follow-up audits, and those go into our, um, audit plans once that implementation date has come, but we want to make sure that they have at least six months into that implementation date, so we'll have some data to audit. But yes, we do go back and do follow-up audits.
Do you then return that information to us? I mean...
We, we do return that to the Audit Committee, and it will be coming in your annual report here. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Crisp.
I, I don't have a question, but I do want to take a moment, Mr. Mayor, to say a thank you to Dr. Jackson, and to let our viewers know that this city cannot run with, without the volunteers that we have. We have a representative from Methodist University. Dr. Jackson is here giving her time from Fayetteville State University. We have a representative from Fayetteville Technical Community College. We have Mrs. Evelyn Shaw from PWC, and all these people have volunteered to give their time and energy to this particular committee, and for that, I'm just personally grateful for what you're doing and the time that you take away from your usual vocation to help us, uh, iron out the, the little bugs in the city. Thank you, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, Dr. Jackson. Counsel, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept that report.
No move, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Mr. McDougal, Mr. Hurst. Counsel, further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for your vote. Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. 8.01, excuse me, is a public hearing on economic development package and incentives for Project Nano II. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Robert Van Guian to come forward. Sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Welcome.
So, pleasure to be here today. Uh, as I get started in prior to your public hearing, I'd just like to say thank you to your team who's been working with us as we've dealt with this prospect, Marshall Bryan on the Code Services, Victor Sharp and his team, uh, the folks at PWC, and our ci- your city manager and your city attorney as well. Today, we are asking that you hold a public hearing, and I would respectfully say, hopefully, that you approve incentives for Project Nano II. Uh, this project has been, this hearing has been advertised in the Fayetteville Observer as required. The project would create 140 full-time jobs and additional 55 part-time jobs. For the full-time jobs, the company would have to pay at least a minimum of 50% of the health benefits for the employees. The average salary would be $32,250 a year, which is almost right at your existing median salary, uh, here in the county. The project will add a $44 million worth of new tax base, generating more than $200,000 a year in revenue. The payroll, estimated payroll of $4.5 million a year will generate additional sales tax revenues for the city. We are respectfully asking that you approve a seven-year, 75% incentive grant that would be equal to the new, based on the new taxes created by the company. So for each year, 75% for seven years of the new tax revenue, and, as well as reimburse the company 25% of their building fees, which we, building inspection fees, which we project to be $100,000. Uh, the county will sell approximately 100 acres of land, $12,500 an acre, and also provide a seven-year, 75% incentive, which they approved at the previous meeting. Uh, we are also working with NC DOT to complete the road in the industrial park. I think, uh, uh, for those of you who have been out to Cedar Creek in 1999 or so, you, the land was purchased, and then a road was run about halfway through. This would complete that, along with additional transportation improvements, and we're working, uh, to secure funding for a natural gas line that is needed for the park. With that said, uh, we, the company would have to create 140 jobs. They would have to invest at least $40 million. They would have to pay at least $32,250 on average if they were to receive the performance-based grants. Uh, once all things were approved, if the company selects us, you would enter into a formal agreement with the company. We are working with the state to secure, uh, incentives and the final grant paperwork from them as well. We have a representative from the company here, and with that, I'm happy to take any questions now or after the public hearing, and I thank you for considering this.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
No speakers, we'll open and close the public hearing. Counsel, any questions? Mr. McDougal.
Thank you, Robert. We certainly want to thank you for the fine job that you're doing already. You, you hop around like a little rabbit, get stuff done, and, uh, I appreciate that. But you get stuff done, that's, you know, I appreciate it. Um, do you know what the current living wage is for our area?
The living wage, as far as what those would define the living wage? Or the, the median wage is 32, that's the, the median amongst all employees is 32,329 is the median wage.
Yeah, I know, but, well, that's what the, it is here, or are you saying that that's the living wage for our area, 30, that 32,000, what?
The median, the median wage is 32,329. So these are averaging right at that, 32,250.
Yeah, and that may be it. We use that term a lot, and I want to make sure that I know what it is. I mean, some number of years ago, I did, and today, right now, I don't know. I thought maybe you knew, um, if we talked about in hourly ways, like, you defined it both annually and hourly.
Yes.
And, uh, so on an hourly basis, what that, what would that be? It seemed like it's somewhere in the 14 dollars.
1554. 1554 an hour.
That would what it, that's what it would be right now?
Yes.
Okay. My other question to you is, uh, so we're about two cents above what would be a living wage.
Living wage, I, I would just, I would just say, sir, living wage is a, uh, slightly different conversation. That's the median wage what you have here. Living wage is based on local economy. Uh, I know, for example, Councilman DeViere spent a lot of time, uh, reviewing some of these, uh, looking at these numbers, and that's, what does it take for a family of a certain size to live at a, I will say, provide for their basic services and housing and such? And that does vary, I think I've seen numbers as high as for a single parent with multiple children, that would be 40,000 or, or more dollars a year, but if they're two earning incomes people, it's different. So what we look at, and what the state requires us to look at, is what are the average wages in your community, and what is the median, which is the midpoint between all positions? And these fall right at the midpoint for all positions currently here in the community. But I don't want to, the living wage discussion is a more nuanced one, and so I, I don't have the numbers on exactly, uh, which we, how we wanted to find that today.
Somebody on staff have them? Like David or, you got them? Alright, on counsel, would you give them to me?
Mr. DeViere, your light's on. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the number statistically that we found, based on the research with Pathways for Prosperity, is $25 an hour for a family of four, which equates to about $50,000 a year. Um, that's a living wage, and when we talk about living wage, that's basic necessities, so housing, uh, transit costs, or automobile, any childcare, or anything like that. So that's basic living, $25 an hour.
And sir, just a question, would that be for, if one position had that, or if two? Would you take two at...
That is a family of four, so either both working or one working.
It's combined, so...
Correct, because it includes childcare.
So two people at this plant would, would actually exceed that.
Okay, we'll, we'll have to work further on that.
No, 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 $25 an hour, one person working in a family of four.
Right.
So that, that doesn't exceed it?
No, but if you had two people working...
Correct.
It'd be 64, yeah, combined.
Um, my other question was, uh, what's the net gain for us as far as, um, Avalorian?
Uh, about, um, over a 10-year period, about a million dollars.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. DeViere, do you have more questions?
Ye- yes, sir, a question, not an answer. Um, you talk about the ra- the median, uh, what's the range? So what do we see for the top, and what do we see for the low?
Uh, 28,000 would be for the clerical and warehouse jobs, the management's jobs would be 62,000. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, I don't see any further questions. We've already, uh, opened and closed the public hearing, so I'll go to you at this time for motion. Ms. Jensen.
Um, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the incentive package, um, brought to us by the Economic Development Commission.
Seconded by Mayor Pro Tim. Any further questions on the motion? Alright, seeing none, counsel, I'll ask for your vote, please. Madam Clerk, that is also unanimous.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your hard work on this one. Congratulations.
Bring more.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.